So it's six o'clock, I'd like to open up the meeting. And are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None for me.
I have one. The rural community transportation and appropriation for the bus that they have running from Mooresville down to Berry, Montpelier. They have an appropriation form to be on the town meeting agenda, so I'd like to... I don't know if we have to, the select board has to approve that we would... They're asking us to get names for them, so I don't know if we have to approve that it would be on the town meeting agenda or...
When you met with them, there was an open question about whether you could just put them in the budget or whether they have to go through the nonprofit sector process. And I don't know if you all had decided that yet. But it looks like they think you did.
So that's, I'd like to add that. And I have another set of the special select board meeting that we had on Saturday. I've got the minutes for that, so I'll add that for approving the minutes. Other than that, that's... Any public comment at all? At this moment, okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
Sorry.
On your favor?
Aye.
And then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes for the November 25th, 2019 select board meeting and also the minutes for the December 7th, 2019 special select board meeting.
Sorry.
Sign them on the dotted line here.
There's two places?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
There are two, yeah. Sorry.
Forgot that one.
Trying to get out of it.
Too late. Could've done that a year ago.
All right. So Lynn, you have the floor.
Oh, really, already?
Already, yeah. You're on 6:02, you're late.
Yeah.
We're minutes over.
Should've started a minute ago, Lynn.
We should've done our other business faster, I guess.
Oh, no, that's fine. You had me up front.
Yeah, yeah, you're right up front, so you don't have to sit through all the other exciting stuff.
Well, a couple of things that I've been working on. I don't know where you want to start.
Up to you. You, you.
Well, what I, what I come up with after doing finding out last weekend that you, that you own both of those 10-wheel trucks now.
Yep, pretty clear.
So I went and did some more research on what estimates of what the longevity of those trucks should be. If we double the longevity of them, we still would be 100,000 miles under what most people would recommend for maximum mileage. You're looking at 100 and... Probably 150, 160,000 miles if you kept them six more years. Using, using what you've already had the last six years. Five years on one and six on the other, but you've got to use an adequate sum of it. So they're both got about the same weight. So what we, what I come up with, talking to three different, I don't know if it's it run trucks like that, that if you ran them another six years, you still would be quite a ways under what their life expectancy would be. Also, I changed my, after sitting down and doing the figures, I changed my mind on what now that you own them. When I came in here last week, I was under the impression that you still, that those trucks were one out and you were in a, in a position where you really needed to get rid of them.
Yeah, no, no, that's not, definitely not the case.
And so what I did was I went in to sit down and did some figures. And I come up with a savings of a little over $14,000 a year if you haul your own sand instead of hiring it done because of the simple fact is that you're not, that $35,000 a year that you're not making payments on anymore, which you were before. And I'm just using that as an approximate, I don't know exactly. But it's around 35,000 plus insurance and...
One, one was a little bit less than the other because I don't really know the reason because they were, they were already bought when I came on the select board. But one was a little bit less than that.
But it comes out in that area. Comes out in that area. So I'm just using, I mean, I didn't have the complete figures, the exact figures of it. But that, so that, that makes it so that, and what my idea was, see how this floats with you guys. As you take that savings, put it in, I went around to several other towns. And every town, you were talking that other, like Harvick was doing this, they wanted to have a six-year turnover or whatever.
Seven years, yes.
Well, most towns have, same as this town used to have, was a truck fund. Those, those towns, like Cap, paid cash for the truck.
Yep, and Harvick does now too.
Harvick does too, yep.
See, so that was my point, and we've gotten away from that.
We have.
We have, yep.
And we're paying high interest on...
Exactly, we're trying to get back.
That's what we're trying to, we agree.
We're trying to get back there.
And, and my point is those trucks are going to be nowhere near one out. We went over last Tuesday. And I didn't climb under them, but I tell you what, I thought we looked them over in pretty good shape. I think the guys are taking pretty good care of them.
They have.
And you're not going to, I mean, I told you that I would tell you what, both pro and con. I mean, if I, something that I feel is, is being done correctly, I'm going to tell you so. I'm not just going to come in here and bitch, you know, that's not my point. That's not my... And with the maintenance kept up, the way it definitely has been, there's no reason in the world that I can see that those trucks can't last another six years. And my point is, if you take that money, just, just the $14,000 difference, you see, it comes out. I figured, you're putting the trucks at, let me get my figure, 9100 miles a year is what it would cost, what it would take to put up 4,000 yards of sand from gravel. All right, and I did the figures on that, and that comes up to about $10,900. It's going to cost you $25,000 to hire it up.
Right.
The sand price is the same, so I'm saying, the sand trucks. Instead of $53,000 approximately, and these are approximate figures, I'm going to change a little bit. You can do it for $38,000 if you do it with your own truck. And to me, that $14,000 could either be applied towards the salary of that person that's doing the hauling, or it can be applied towards a percentage that you put back into the truck fund over a period of six years. That's a pretty substantial amount of money.
Yeah, it is.
Just in the savings. Now, the only thing that I can't come up with for a, for a set amount is the price of the tires.
Right.
Right.
Those are incidentals.
You're going to be 5% to 10% probably.
Probably, but I can't.
Yeah, the real wear and tear in the tires, as you probably already know, is where, you know, the winter time and the change.
You have to wear the tires, yep.
And, and, but from what I can figure out from what's going on, that only about 11, between 11 and 12% of the truck use is actually snow plowing and sanding. That's why the mileage is so low. And what's another thing, the people that I talked to about the truck blasting, their old machines are good, that eight, I'm going to use that as a figure, 80% of your trucks are being run on a blacktop. Now, construction trucks don't usually do that. I mean, you're not, when you're hauling sand, you're not hauling, you know, you're not putting the trucks in an adverse condition anywhere. So that means that these trucks, even it's at 80,000 miles or 75, well, 80,000, now we will go and check.
Yeah, it's been longer.
Because it was $5,000 more than what we had.
Yeah, it's about 80.
About 80,000 now is under pretty easy conditions. So the wear and tear on those trucks, from what everybody tells me, is actually quite a lot less than what it would be on a normal dump truck that worked in construction. So there again, if the trucks have continued to be maintained, and you guys have got to come up with a figure for maintenance, I mean, and, and a percentage to put into a truck fund, you're going to be a lot better off, I think, as a taxpayer, and I think you would, you're going to need to talk this about it. In six years, and it's still only going to be 150,000 miles, it's still going to be 100,000 miles under what they figure that the actual usage of them is. So they're still going to be worth a fairly substantial amount of money.
Yeah.
And then you could have a pretty...
We have time to put money away.
Put money, six years, or maybe seven, I mean, I'm just using six years, double the time is what I'm imagining. If you're going to use the same amount, I'm going to, I estimate that you're going to, that you're going to probably put about the same amount of miles on. I mean, I don't have any other way to...
It should be, you know, that should be...
Don't have any other way to...
That would still be the same, yeah.
It's one thing we got to look at too, is trying to get them separated, which means one of them may have to go a little sooner than we want, so you can spread them.
Well, I got a thing to do that, when you think about this. You just, can you, can you tell me, you have your figure that you have for your new truck, that single axle GoPro?
I don't have any figures at all, I know the road crew does, but I...
No, I mean, what's the cost of purchasing?
$156,000, I think, but that's, that's my memory, I could find that.
Well, no, I don't, I'm just, if that's, that's a...
That's whatever they on it.
That's the body, plow, the works, that was the...
Yeah, I don't remember what it was either.
And what my point is, I'm talking with dealers, I went to Burlington and talked with a dealer too. And those trucks, you take the two of them, I still am confirmed believer that you can find another smaller truck and trade both of those at the end of this six or seven year cycle and not have two 10-wheelers, have one 10-wheeler and maybe two smaller trucks that get around better, you know.
Four-wheel drive. Like the old Internationals, that's, that size?
Yeah, that size.
Yeah, International Chevy makes that, Harvick just bought one, it's a 30K, 30,000. I'm going to go down and look at theirs.
Well, Callis.
Detroit.
Just barely could deliver it yet.
It's a Duramax diesel with an Alfa.
So you're saying just keep one of the big 10-wheelers to haul it?
One of the same wheelers, but when you, but you need to, but to me, in order to talk to the dealer, now you own them, you need to max them out. If you trade them in at 75,000 miles, how are you going to, you're not going to, the town is not going to recoup its initial investment. Because they're going to take those trucks and sell them for 60, 70, 80% of what you already paid for. Run them out, and then when you get ready to trade both of them, trade them, both of them, the one 10-wheeler and a smaller truck, and you have a truck fund to put into them, so I'm saying. I think it just makes sense for the town to, over a period of six or seven years, but you're not, they're still going to be way undervalued.
Do you think two LowPros would, would work?
Yeah, I think, well, the town...
It's a 110 wheeler and a couple of LowPros?
Couple of LowPros.
The only benefit, the 10-wheelers hauling sand, I mean, just piling that small truck, I mean, they rave about that smaller all-wheel drive truck.
We talked extensively, we talked extensively with Greg about that, and the thing about, and I've said this, we talked about it before, way back, when I was working for the town, that we have some roads in this town. It'd be so nice if you had those trucks and they get around so much easier. And the majority of the 10-wheeler, if you're going to haul your own sand, is that's basically what it does in the state of Plow. You're not going to plow any better or any faster with that 10-wheeler than you would with that LowPro truck, and you can go at a lot less expense.
Right.
What's a LowPro?
That's just a smaller truck.
It's a smaller truck.
But not as small as a 110?
No, no, no.
No, it's the one that takes it over there now, it's four-wheel drive.
Third plow truck that we have now.
It's all-wheel drive.
It's all-wheel drive and, and it's six-year truck.
But it's bigger than that little Ford that they have, it's in between them and the big dump truck.
Okay.
So they make a size for everything now.
Okay.
And I came up with, you're looking at, at that price, you're looking at 60, 70,000 dollars cheaper to buy the next truck. And like, like Greg was talking over there the other day, we talked, but their intention of that is basically to keep it to plow snowing. If you just use that single, that LowPro truck to plow snowing, it'll last you 10, 12 years, easy.
Or just maintain it well, yep.
Maintain it, they've done a good job of it.
No, I've always said that, that they keep, you know, they're right on top of it, but I mean, they're both mechanics.
The LowPro hauls the salt, all right?
No, no, no. I've got a scenario for that.
That's why we hung on to the 550.
And with Son, I made the list, and he's going to probably get the same suggestion.
But we've, we looked at that over, and there's a few things that we could do to that to make it live another year or two, but my idea, and Paul and I talked this over as far as that, so you need that so you don't put salt in those other trucks.
Yeah.
Those other trucks are too expensive to put salt in.
Unless you're going to buy stainless steel bodies, which are double the cost.
But then, then it gets into the running here.
Yeah, gets in everything else.
Yeah, that was Greg Parker's, you know, he wanted to really hang on to that for...
Just for that.
And there's a lot we could be done with it, we could take, I don't want to go into detail completely tonight, but take the body off it, put a flatbed on it, put a slide-in sander that could use it in the next rig.
Yeah, other people have suggested that before.
And that way...
Then that could move to the next vehicle.
Move to the next vehicle, which isn't a big expense. I priced, you've got to, if we shop around a little bit, we can buy a brand new one.
Yeah, brand new.
$4,000, a two-yard slide-in sander, electric.
With the flatbed, you can move from truck to truck with the sander in it.
With the sander in it, you don't need that dump.
And with a flatbed, they could use it for other things.
Yeah, in the summer, you pull it out, now you've got the other truck to drive around.
And you don't need that expense of the dump body because you have the other single axle dump truck in the summer if you need to, you know, to move it.
That would maximize the money we spent upgrading and getting it repaired for if we could get a couple more years.
I think if we looked, I didn't get right after it, but the frame is, I think we could take that truck, take the body off it and get it at least another year. I mean, if it doesn't, it doesn't, but I've been looking for three-quarter ton, 110 trucks. Throughout the state, I found two in Rhode Island, 550s with, without a cabin chassis.
All-wheel drive, yeah.
For $25,000, with 30,000 miles on it. You know, there seems like that, if we spend some time looking, we can have something that we can use. But you've got to have small trucks that do salt and go, you can't expect them to go after parks.
And that's something they could run around and, oh, that's been a...
Yeah. And wanted to run.
When I was there, we didn't have anything at the time, you know, and, and so you'd end up, but they end up using their own vehicles, and that doesn't work.
Right.
But the expense, but the expense of what 550, you're talking $89,000 for new. And my idea of that is, is to, to keep our costs down, look in the future, and I think you'll find that money-wise, instead of ditching those things now when they're in such good condition, that they'll be nearly as good a condition because you're only using them minimally.
Right, yep.
Because you have two of them. And even if you just have one, you're only putting on 10,000 miles a year with just one truck. So this, this hauling sand, if you split it up, is only 5,000 miles a year for each truck. And I know that we're, we're getting, I'm getting away from, my, my recommendation was before that we, you know, hire it done, well, and it frees up a man to do the other work, but I think that you can, if we get some coordination and a schedule, figure it out over there with the crew, that they can do that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, they have had a system that works.
Right, with one person pretty much hauling all the sand.
And, and find, you know, time and the wherewithal to cut brush, clean culvert, do those sorts of things that aren't, that aren't being done and have not been done. I mean, it didn't draw rocket science to go look. Just like last Tuesday when we went over that nasty pothole over there.
On County Road?
On County Road. We just suggested doing it, we fixed it up, but there's one of the things that bothers me is that they didn't do that on their own. They were over there putting the wings and plows on those trucks in, first through October when it was 65 degrees. That's when they should have been out fixing these potholes for winter, getting the roads ready because you don't need the wings on those trucks in October. I mean, it's just, that, that, that's a management thing.
Right, I think there's partly, you know, just the nervousness of, you know, it's going to, it could happen sometime, but want to be ready.
It happens every year, but we, we plowed roads in this town for years and years and years and years with no wings.
Right.
You could slap on that plow in a, in a matter of hours if we have a snowstorm, and that's not it. And the idea, how many times have we had a major snowstorm or any snowstorm the first of two weeks in October? You get an inch or two. My point is, that's a management thing. It's a little thing, but it's a management thing. Instead of these potholes being the way they are, that's when you fix this stuff for winter. And that's what comes back to managing the time and the resources. That's basically where I'm coming from. Now, I, I'll get off the truck, I went down and met with Pete about the excavator. They're going to send a man up to look at that and come up with a value.
And he will look at it and tell us whether the bottom is shot, all that stuff, he'll give us an assessment?
He'll give us an assessment of it and a value of it. And like I said to him, then we can figure out if it's what you want to do with it. Because it's going to be, that's going to mean something, whether, how much you're going to, an estimate of how much you'll have to put into it to keep it, how much you'll have to put into it if you decide that you want to trade it or whatever, or sell it, or whatever you want to come up with, but you've got to start somewhere, and that's... And he said he would send a man as soon as he freed somebody up.
I'm curious, Greg has talked to some people about it too, I'm not sure what, what he's had.
Yeah, so when I talked to Greg the other day, I went over there and met with him Thursday, and he looked at, he's saying what they've, he knows it needs a couple rollers for sure. One of the pistons is leaking on the boom, needs to be rebuilt. And the, the grease, the...
Those are, I can adjust.
Well, the attentioner, the attentioner needs to be rebuilt. So he felt like they could take one link out of the chain and shorten it, I don't know that that's...
Well, I talked with Pete today, and he says those, those rigs, the steel tracks, the pins wear on the inside so you can't see them.
Okay, that's what I don't know, I just was...
And if they're doing that, that's not a, that's not a cure, if you're taking a lag out, you know, link out.
So you're thinking it needs new chains and we can reuse the pads?
And that's, I looked at the sprockets and they're getting down, but they probably...
Yeah, they got a little, they got a little bit of wear left on them.
But he's, this guy will give us...
He'll give us good...
He'll give us a good estimate, he'll give us an estimate of what, you know, what it needs for repairs, and then we, and you guys can sit down and make an educated assessment of whether you want to put that money into it or what you want to do with it.
So this fellow Pete, is that a, is he part of it, I'm sure?
He owns Pete's equipment.
He owns Pete's equipment.
And which is where, I think that's where he bought that.
Fred bought it.
Okay.
Is that Moorestown?
Yeah.
Probably not too far away then.
Yeah.
And he was, I met with him today and had a pretty good talk with him about that, and then, and he said, yeah, he said, but the trouble is, of course, there may be things that they'll find once they get it. One of the problems, one of the problems they're going to have, it's over there frozen in the dirt, he ain't going to be able to trade it.
Right, and I did talk to Greg about that, he said that the problem was it got parked when he wasn't here and they didn't know to put it on something, that's what he told me.
There again, it comes back to the management thing.
And he says as soon as things thawed out, he's going to try to get it out of there, he understands it shouldn't be frozen with the ground.
Yeah, he was, you know, he took a vacation, he's a deer hunter.
He was gone for two weeks.
Which is fine, but I mean, that's, but still, it, it isn't rocket science, and it's, but it's those little things that hurt us immensely, you know.
Always the little things that bite you.
Just a little warm break, maybe they can...
They can get it broken free.
Yeah, right now, we got a little warm break.
Tomorrow might be a good day to try to move it and see if it'll turn off.
We've got two days, we've got today, tomorrow, and it'll probably get it sorted out, but that's, that, to me, that's a starting point, and maybe, maybe that it doesn't make any sense to keep it for what's...
Sounds like a good thing to do, yeah.
We'll look at it, and we got a, that fits into a whole bunch of other things, what are our goals and focus is going to be? Because if you're going to stay with ditching, doing your own, so then the excavator's the machine. If you're going to focus changes to how well we're doing, then you need a different machine.
I went and spent two days in the last two weeks going around as best I could assessing what the road ditching problems are and what, what we need to do, and I, as best as I can come up with, you probably got a minimum of three months with the work.
If you just kept somebody on it.
On it full-time, it'd take two-man crew.
Just me, like, just cleaning them and getting them...
That's, that's a challenge we got coming up, because we got to focus on berms too.
Yep.
And you got to figure that out for next summer.
There's a lot, there's a lot of work to spend electing.
And they got to ditch it before they can burn it.
Some of it, yeah. That's what I'm saying, we've got to, we've got to figure out some of this stuff for our focus, that's on my other list, is just what we're going to have our focus.
I mean, I just, and what I would, I mean, I, I'm more than willing to help you guys to do any of this sort of thing. If you've come to a point where you, I'm not in this to try to force Greg Parker's to help or Greg Adams to help, that, that's not my point. My point is to fix these things that are, haven't been addressed for about six, seven years, maybe longer. And to try to find a way to curb this exodus of money. Like this new truck thing, if it's, just because it's what you want doesn't necessarily mean it's what we need.
Right.
There's a, there's a hell of a difference as far as the way I look at it as a taxpayer, and I know, and I, you know, how, how things can be done and what action needs to be done with a machinery, as far as that grader goes. I went and worked at grader. As far as I can tell, there's a damn thing wrong with that one. It's old, it's all mine.
It's old and it's kind of small by status for what other towns have.
I don't care, see, that's, I run grader and everything, and that's a perfect size for this town. Every town that buys a new one, the road company says, I want a bigger grader. Every town has a grader that's way too big for what they need. Including Callis, over at Marshfield.
Callis has two graders.
They got two graders, yeah.
Well, but they, the reason they did, they got a deal, see, Marshfield decided they wanted a great big John Deere grader, and so they sold the town to Callis, their smaller John Deere grader for a little bit of money because they weren't going to give them anything for trading, and that's when they ended up with that second grader. And Marshfield bought this big, humongous John Deere grader that was twice as big as it needs to be for what you're doing.
Are grader big enough for what?
Oh, it is now, and it always has been.
Now, you, something else you mentioned with the grader, where there's buying some ripper teeth for the go-on-to-front.
There's a, there's a system that would save us some money on our, on our ripper teeth that go on the cutting edge. Those are expensive, diamond teeth are expensive. And we could cut down on probably one set of them every two years if we put the money into a ripper system. They have a set of teeth that bolt to the front of the grader. The only thing is, it takes some training because they go like to rip up a culvert with them. What they're doing, what the idea of them is, that teeth that come down, the hydraulic get operated.
Like a plow almost, and we break that right up.
And it breaks up that surface of the road, which, that's all those diamond teeth are doing.
That's what they're doing.
But it digs it down a little deeper, but yeah, you would hook a culvert and pop it right out of the ground.
But you're not, you just have to be careful, you have to go and know what the culverts are.
So do you rip and grade at the same time?
No, no.
You rip first?
No, you rip it, you rip your road up, make three, four passes. They're only, they're only about four feet wide, they fit right inside the front wheels, they come right in, the hydraulic thing operating, it would fit right on that machine.
They look like a little plow.
Yeah, it's just about a bunch of fangs, like the sticks that would just dig through.
They dig through it, and they've got caps on, so when they wear out, you put new caps on, the caps on are like $30 a piece. But what, my point is, then you could grade a lot of your roads with your regular cutting edge, which are one-tenth the price.
Of the cut-by-teeth.
Of the cut-by-teeth.
And it would, you do that once a year probably, right, just reshape that road?
Well, it, whatever it takes, I mean, whatever it takes, but when the sun's on, when they get packed hard, hard, hard. And it's like, what happens here now, one of the problems that these guys have got, they've never learned how to cut the potholes out. If you've got teeth that rippers on them, you can go before you grade, you know, bad spots, and rip those potholes out, right? They got to be, to fix a pothole, you've got to go to the bottom of it. And they've had to, see, all this sand we've been putting on, that's all they're grading. They're not getting into the sub-bays anymore. So what they're doing, they're filling those potholes with sand, and first time you get a good hard rain, the potholes are back, but if you go with that ripper, take those potholes out. I don't care if there's 15 of them in the section that you're going to grade today, then you go back and grade your road. Those potholes will be gone a lot longer, maybe 80% more. You know, it's all a, a system thing, but there again, it's...
You could still grade them out, because we've seen Rip do it for years.
Well, I'm going to grade them out, but you've got to make, you've got to make four, five, six, seven passes.
This reduces that first pass to one, you break them all up. Plus it helps you mix that sand into the, into the base.
You don't have to do the whole route, but to do the worst, the hard, but then sometimes when it's hard, you do the whole thing. Six inches, eight inches deep, when you get to them potholes, you rip them, make four, five passes right there, you're just ripping them out, rip them out, then back up and grade it, and you can use your regular gradable.
It mixes all that material in, that's, the sand's got to be rolled underneath that gravel.
That's one of the problems we've got here, why the berms are so bad on the ends of the road, it's all that sand. They haven't been taken and cleaned up. Now, before, that's another tip, but another thing that I want to go before I leave. You did your sand a three-year contract, right?
Yes.
Is it up this year?
No, this is the second year of the three-year contract.
So you've got one more year?
One more year.
All right. Well, I'm gonna look around for some more sand prices, but there's no sense in doing it until your contract is up.
So we got this winter, next winter, sand?
I think, you know, as over the last few years, kind of really, the sand that we get from gravel is, is good sand. It's good sand and.
Kenny Davis had almost the identical sand, but he was a hair more, right?
No, actually, the gravel was a hair more, yeah.
Gravel was a hair more. The sieve test was about the same, but there were some complaints that Davis might.
Different files.
Right. But what my, what my, I talked with Scott McCullough several times about it. They go, oh, big savings they've made. But Callis has excellent sand. You know why? Because they put stone in it. That's the only difference, except the sand that you get out of, out of there is clean because it's water. There's no clay or whatever residue in it. They inject the stone into it. Callis has more stone than we do.
Right, and bigger, bigger stone. I notice the difference when I go up Foster Hill and then head down into the north.
I don't remember why we didn't want Callis's gravel or sand, do you?
I do, because Harry didn't want to do it. Harry didn't like it, because what happened was, he didn't want to pay for the stone. See, that was, the stone is a little, it's a little more expensive a yard. But then we're right about a ton, because they had scales, scales are gone, then they also were given by the yard. But you take a look at the sand, and what my point was been with Harry, when he, because he swept over immediately after I left. He didn't want it, he didn't.
So you were buying it from?
Bought every bit of it from there, and I got a deal on that for that year from the state. That's how come we put up that extra sand pile. So you guys are using twelve hundred yards more sand a year than we ever did before. I put up four thousand yards that year I was here, because I got a deal from the state of Vermont. They were stopping using sand altogether. And they gave me, not my fair, and the orange sand for four dollars a yard. And then they only charged me for about two-thirds of what we hauled. So we ended up with about twelve hundred yards of sand from the state that was cheaper, see, because that's why. But Harry, the main reason Harry, Cliff Rathburn, he and Cliff didn't get along. And Cliff was, didn't, you know, doing all the, and so on and so forth from down there, and that's where that, that's where that all started. But I can, the trucking would be one about one-fifth. See, that's.
Where their sand in their pit down there, right in East Callis.
Cliff Rathburn, when I had him put up our sand that year, he could do between thirty-two and thirty-five loads a day. And the best that you guys are doing, the best of ten, was about, well, eight on average, eight to nine on a good day, but if there's any other trucks there.
So it's a huge savings.
It's an hour round trip.
Just, just in the time, but in the fuel, where I'm tearing a truck, you're gonna take this nine thousand miles down to three thousand miles to put up your sand pile. So you've got to, me, you've got to sit down and figure that difference into your, into your total expenditure for sand. And you can come up with just as good a sand or better sand, if you make sure that the stone gets put into it.
When you guys did this the last time, I think it might have been before I had just come on after that, you must have put it out to bid?
You were, you had just come, you were on the.
Just on the board, yeah. So I put it out to Victor. I don't remember McCullough's bidding on it.
No, they haven't for a few years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Scott, well, because, well.
We only had his and.
Which is like Ken Davis.
Kenny Davis.
He got some, I don't know who Scott got his feedback from, but he said whoever he talked to, I don't know how well you know Scott, but if you don't act interested, he not interested, he don't have to be here.
Yeah.
And he just said, they don't want to talk to me, they can go. I ain't gonna say that, but that's what he told me, and that's why he didn't even put it in front. He said, the hell, if you're not interested, because we always haul it from there. Oh, well, no, I can't say that. Gary tried it from the pit up in Hardwick one year, and then he tried it one year.
From Demers, you mean, or?
Well, he tried it from Demers one year, but he tried the pit up in Hardwick, uh, that, well, uh, by the old dump.
Yeah.
And that.
We've got it over on Route Two there, Vic River.
Well, that's.
That's gravel.
That's gravel. I don't think there's any, I don't think they have any sand.
Stone and gravel.
But those, and those didn't Gary only haul up, had them one year, and he hired, and he hired Adam Davis one year, Gary did. But what happened was, the guy that they hired to haul it waited until the first of October. It was decent sand, but it rained, put it there every day, the guys hauling it, so what happened was, they had twenty-five hundred yards of sand over here. Froze, soaked in water. And froze, that happened to be one of them with this one.
I remember those big chunks that they kept rolling in with the land over there.
And that's, and that's what happens, you know? That's one of the good things about the guys hauling the sand over the summer.
That's hauling on dry days.
That's another reason they prefer gravel, that it doesn't freeze as much. I know that, that when they use the Demers pit, it didn't stay on the road very well. They had a lot of frozen chunks they had to deal with.
Yeah, well, that's what happens with it, that's when you've got that stuff in it. The thing to do is, anybody who wants to see the difference is go down to Callis and look at Callis's pile of sand. It isn't a, you know, you go in and look at it, and you look at what Callis does with it. The only problem with Callis has, well, UPS guy says, you think Woodbury's bad, you want to go to Callis, because you can't get there.
I do notice, you know, I drive Foster Hill County Road pretty regular in my, in my work. And the roads always seem better in Woodbury. Of course, Foster Hill and Callis, that's kind of the end of a fringe road for them, but it's always so much better.
Well, what happens with them is, it happened this year, where the UPS man is, and what's happened is, they, I don't know what they, haven't turned the sander on it. It's like a dribble in the middle of the road.
Right, I think they are kind of cautious on how much sand we use, because, yeah, I mean, there's, and I see the stone, but I don't see much sand. And the road's pretty icy underneath.
Because when the layer, as it melts, you got sand reappears and it helps.
They've also got ninety-three miles of road.
Yeah, they have quite a few.
So, but anyway, that's, that's where I'm at, and I'm just, and I'm more than, more than willing to, I mean, I can, I know that the guys, well, Paul and I had a, I thought.
Sound like you had a good.
We did have a nice conversation.
Greg Parkers wasn't here, he was hunting. But Gary Adams was, I thought, quite receptive to what we had.
Yeah, I would concur, yeah.
Yeah, and it would be nice if we could get Greg Parkers to kind of just sit down, I think.
Yeah, and I had a very nice conversation with Greg, so I think we need to talk about these things with Greg.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm, I want you guys to confer to him. I don't have anything against him. He thinks it, and I'm not trying to take his job or cause him trouble. That's not what I'm doing here. And I don't, you guys need to understand that I try and, I know how to save this town some money. And I, that's all I'm, that's all I'm doing. And if he's willing to do the job, that's all we need. Because I think with some, with some direction, he, they're more than capable of doing what needs to be done.
Well, I would hope that you guys could have good discussions about this and not, and, you know, the kind of tensioner, that that could, could go away. And that, you know, we could come, it would be a positive result for the town.
Well, what do you guys think? Brian and I talked about a little bit, about setting those guys down individually in a, in a setting for you guys.
That probably needs to happen. I think it's probably a good idea. Because we don't do evaluations.
No, we don't, yeah, it would be nice.
Because I'd like to get, I'd like to get some feedback from them too, just honest stuff that they think needs.
All of them, yeah.
We don't have to agree with everything, it just, let's hear them out. Everybody wants to be heard out, so.
I mean, there, it's pretty evident that they have different ideas than I do.
Sure.
About a lot of things that are going on. But my, where I'm coming from is, I guess that I'm cheap. But what, I've been doing this a lifetime, and this, and this, there's a lot of ways, if you pay attention, that we can save a lot of money over a long period of time.
It starts with the trucks, obviously, because that's our basic.
Your two biggest ones, equipment and salaries.
And, and it's, and it seems to me, the way your guys have set up, you guys can figure that out. I mean, you've got to figure that out eventually, what you're gonna do about it. But you've got to start somewhere, and this seemed like a good place to start. And it's, all of these things we've talked about are little things. You know, there's no big, big, but there's a lot of little things to save this town. Everybody in here, if the tech will, she's not, but, but all taxpayers. To keep, if you don't pay attention to that, at some point, like it's gotten out of hand. I think it's gotten out of hand now, and it's about to take another leap, and that we can work around or work through. I mean.
Yeah, we got into buying equipment to do our own work instead of subbing, you know, we get just kind of, and that's expensive.
I got another thing. I've been looking, I've been looking, and I found a tractor, fifty horsepower tractor in Maine, that's big enough to do the roadside mowing. And I found a second-hand mowing machine, roadside mower, for around nine thousand dollars. But my point is, you do your, see, what you guys come up with and everybody's come up with, to the last, Harry started this, they wanted a mowing machine to cut the brush with. It didn't work. Didn't work. You cut brush with a chainsaw, throw that bore over there, you mow the roadside. And if we have a decent tractor with a roadside mower on it that we own for less than twenty-five thousand dollars, a good piece of machinery, you can mow those road sides two or three times a year, when the guy's sitting and doesn't have anything to do. We own that, we haven't got a lot of money invested in it. And when Gary and Rip mow the roadside two and three times a year and kept.
So we, the town did have its own?
We did, yes.
And its own tractor with a mower.
That's what, that's what Greg had preferred.
Had a sicklebar mower.
And see, what you guys have spent in the last seven, eight years.
It's a lot of money, so it's serious to take a look at it.
What you're doing with that is a boom mower. And you guys, I'm not blaming anybody, just you don't know the difference, because you don't do it, but what happens is.
Did they have a sicklebar mower before?
Yeah, and what, what I found was, a good disc mower that's made with an extender on it to do.
With a reach-out and something's made.
Not a boom. You don't need that. That's forty thousand dollars that you don't need, because you need to cut brush with a chainsaw. All I did, the year that you had David Quayke over here, and he rented that bigger rig with a flail on it, I picked up brushing him up for two days.
Right.
Yeah, shook it, and I was my ear with the big mower.
It's not the proper way to do it, and all you need to do is mow back the roadside, not, and you cut brush, you go cut brush. We got a wood chipper.
We got enough subs to do brush, yeah.
And that just gets into the organization. We're talking about how to.
That's my point, is I got a way, I found, I can, I can find this stuff, and I will, and I will help you guys find this stuff if you're interested. And we can put up, you know, we can save a lot of money.
Still do, still do all the work.
Still do all the work. And especially with the manpower you've got. If you can get them to agree to do a few of these things. I've got wood chipper, though, when was the last time it was even used?
It's been a few years, yeah.
You know, and that's a shame. I mean, it's, you own it, and for the crews, I could go around, and I did, two days ago. I was nothing to do, I guess, I'm getting old and seeing I'm gonna have a better life, but I would, I can, I can, I can take the guys and show them you can cut brush for weeks and weeks and weeks. You realize that Rip Brown into his late seventies and Gary Ewen, they cut ten to fourteen cord of wood a year on the roadside. Since Harry took over there and not cut one stick.
Right.
So think about that. So how much brush? That's brush and wood. They cut firewood. You know, so everything. And that's what happened. You see, all that stuff has come back in in the last ten years. And you can't do it all at once. You gotta do it.
You can't do it with that flail mower.
You can't do it with that flail mower. All it does, it doesn't even begin.
Just tears it.
Just makes a mess.
So you've got to have a plan. That's where that plan comes in. You've got to do so many miles of brush cutting a year.
Doing the worst spots, and then you've got a wood, you've got a chipper that's sitting over there. You've got the manpower, you've got chainsaws, you've got people that just need to be, have direction. And I guess that's, I probably got a whole bunch.
I got it written down, so we'll work on this stuff.
Can we go back to the grader for a minute?
Yeah.
Is there a grader class that these guys can take?
I think we need to do.
Or do you need to get an old-time person that has?
I'm the old-time person. I went to the class.
Uh-huh, you did, yeah. They didn't offer one this year, but I know.
No, but let me tell you, all the things. All right, first of all, I want you to go at them, and write them in the state of Vermont. How much dirt roads does the state of Vermont have?
Right, the state itself, right.
Their class on the grader is they, uh, it's a video. And a talk by a guy that can't spell grader. And he's got some good points. There are a few things, but he does not, there's only one way.
There's no hands-on.
The only one way to learn to run a machine, doesn't drive it, use it.
And the instruction, I know, I walk it pretty well. I have to do the AGC classes down there. And that's where they go to take these classes. So I watched the video. I mean, there's probably, but most, probably sixty, sixty-five, seventy percent of what they teach them is wrong. Because the guy that made the video, he's a salesman. He's a grader salesman.
Oh, yeah?
He's not a grader operator. And it's, there's only one way, and I'd be more than willing to take these guys, there's a lot of things that need to be done, and it'd be simple. All you don't get in it with them and do that. You go and tell them, this is what, do, do whatever they're gonna do. And then, and when they get done, you go and see what they've done and tell them what they need to do different. And that's how you teach somebody. You don't stand there and watch a video or stand there with a pointy stick. I even got Bill so he could, was pretty good with the grader. And Harry learned, guess how Harry learned? By getting in it. He, when he came here, he couldn't run that, he could drive it. But Greg Parkers cannot run grader. I mean, I don't, because, I don't know why. I'm not, I'm not here to speculate that. And so Harry took it away from him. Because that was what he, Harry hired Greg Parkers to do, to come here and run grader. Well, that was pretty evident after the first two years of that, it all worked, and so Harry, but Harry got pretty good at it. But Harry would listen a little better. And that's how you learn. And there again, I'd be more than willing to spend the weekends, nights, evenings. I'm not gonna do it. I want it anytime I do it. I want it next to anybody's shore. That's Parker's thing, I think, is against me, is he thinks I'm gonna take your job. Well, I don't want your job. I had a job, I don't want it. I got a job. That's not my point. And I'd be more than willing to help. Her husband would be a perfect example. He wants to learn, he wants to do this thing, take him and teach him. He can go to all the classes he wants to, until you get in it and do it and make mistakes. And guess how you fix it? You make a mistake, you fix it.
Bill Condon has said the same thing to me at the shop a number of times, that they're not doing a good job. He could teach them himself better, because Bill says he got really good on the grader too.
He didn't, he couldn't run it. When he came to work for me, three months, I had him, so he was doing a decent job, because I'd make him go do it. He'd go do it, and if you did it wrong, I made him go do it over, and make him, and tell him, this is what you did wrong, go back and do it. Well, you'll be surprised.
He's always stopping now, saying, if you guys have let me in this weekend, I'll go fix these roads for these guys. Can't do it, Bill.
No, no, we can't do that. But anyway, I take up your time.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for giving us your time.
Like I said, I'm here to help, and I'm more than, and I want you to pass that on loads like. I'm not here to cause them.
Well, they'll probably watch this, so.
Well, that's fine, but I'm not here to cause you trouble either. That's not my point. My point is that I think there's some room to save some money, and I think this is the best way that we gotta start someplace. And this seems like a starting point to me. And I'm willing to give you.
If there's anything that we can get better at, I think we owe it to the town to get better at it, yeah.
We're all taxpayers. You're gonna see the benefit this time.
Yeah.
I am.
I mean, it's all, it's all in our best interest. And like I said before, we all want a lot of things, but we need them. And I think that's a perfect thing to remember. And maybe it's kind of simplistic, but.
Well, it's kind of the Overmount way, yeah.
And, and we've gotten away from it here. I mean, I've been here a long time, and I've seen what's, what's happened, and I don't agree with a lot of it. I think we're really, we're at the position, that, that doesn't matter anymore. We're not there. We're at, we're at, where we're at now. And the only way we can fix it, I think now, is to make some changes, and they don't have to be massive, nothing's, nothing's grotesque here. It's just a whole litany of little things that could save a lot of money over time. And I think you would find, and I think the town crew would find, that once they find out how to do things in a better way, they'll have more pride in what they're doing. That's important.
It is, and I know it's important to them too. I mean, they, I think, you know, they want to do a good job, and they, they're, you know, and in some ways they are. But I agree, it would help to, that there needs to be some, some learning.
Yeah, and well, and like we talked about, management, I think, is a lot. We just got to figure out somehow.
None of us have that, that's something we gotta figure out.
That's something you gotta figure out. And like I said, I'm more than willing to help, anyway I can, but I don't, I didn't come into this. And like I said, I'm more than willing to help, anyway I can, but I don't, I didn't come into this looking to start a fight with anybody or cause trouble, trying to cure some problems that I've been looking at for a long time. You and I talked about it two, three years ago. And it's gotten worse. And that's.
You gotta turn it around, yeah.
And I, I have the time and the wherewithal and to help you guys and I gotta, it just seems to me like you guys are receptive to it. And if you need to ask any of me anything, I've got a phone, you know.
Okay, yeah, you're in the book.
Yeah. Make sure you get the right name.
You're retired yet, you're still going back to Mike?
I'm retiring.
Yep. Mike said that.
No, I'm gonna work.
You go back next summer, yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta let the phone company know to get your name right.
No, I'm gonna work, but I'm, in the summer, I'd be available weekends and afternoons, I only work nine, ten hours a day. And in the summertime, if you've got somebody that wants to, to learn, I'm more than willing to give them. And I'll do this, I don't, I'm not doing this to make money, I'm doing this to help the town.
Yeah, so that's the potential is maybe our subs would love to take advantage of some of this.
I think we need, that's what I've said, we'll teach them all, cause you never know who you're gonna get to teach.
Man, the need is, these young guys, there's some that, they're young, cause you just talking, those two guys that are over there, the two Gregs are getting up in age.
Greg Adams will be retiring next fall, as far as I know.
Well.
That may not be so true.
That may not be.
Okay, all right.
We talked with him and he's about, that's, that's, that's his business and I'm not gonna step in.
It's not his business, yeah.
But what I'm getting at is, you've got some people that wanna work here and it's a lot easier to train them and teach them what you wanna do than it is to try to find somebody from outside and then find out six months or a year that they're not working out and then you gotta do it again.
Cause we got good people, I think.
We do have good people.
Training them, so that they wanna, wanna.
And I'm more than willing to do that. I've done a lot of it. And for fifty years and I'm more than willing to help, this doesn't, this helps everybody, it's in jail. And that I'm gonna leave.
Thank you, man.
I took more than, I took more than fifteen minutes.
That's a good discussion.
That's okay. We'll let you get away with it.
We left a little room.
We'll put me down for next week, uh, two weeks.
Next two weeks, okay.
Okay, actually, should we bring the meet in two weeks, do we wanna take a break?
What day is the meeting?
Well, we're doing the budget on.
Well, we're gonna be doing the budget two.
The twelfth and the nineteenth, you were saying the twenty-third.
Yeah, do we wanna?
I prefer not to.
Twenty-third, yeah, that's your, for Christmas, yeah, we can skip that one.
So, in January?
Thirteenth would be the first meeting.
Okay, all right.
Cause the next two, we're gonna be doing the budget.
Yeah, we're gonna be.
Have, give me, have, give me a whole file of stuff to add to.
All right. So our next, our list today.
Thank you, yeah.
Today's the ninth, so we'd be skipping the twenty-third and going to the thirteenth.
Give ourselves a little Christmas turkey.
Okay, so nothing for this. That's a whole month off though, but we'll, we're gonna be meeting the twelfth and the nineteenth for budget meetings.
Yeah, we can do some bill signing and stuff, we, we'll check with Brandy and see.
We'll say, whoever make that decision.
See if she'll let's get away with it.
Cause we are gonna be here, it's just a matter of, uh.
And you also have your meeting on the tenth of January too.
Right, we're focusing on the, uh, budget really.
What's a tent for?
The spur.
The row spur, yeah. Cause again, if there were people that needed to speak with us, we could allow a little time, those two meetings, that way we aren't so far, cause it's a long way.
We can meet, I mean, we could just maybe make it shorter.
That's true, we could leave it.
If, if such a thing is ever possible, sometimes it is, but usually it happens by, uh, you aren't expecting, oh, we're all done already. Okay, so, moving on, um, Brandy? We're waiting for the town treasurer.
That's a pretty good discussion with Linda, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, and I think it's opened up a dialogue with the other folk, I think it really needed that suggestion of bringing people in one at a time talking, it was nothing wants to be imposed on anybody, cause none of us would receive that very well.
Right.
Thank you.
If you work the things again. Be an adventure to do that all.
Yeah, sounds good.
So until, um, Tom does the bank recs for November, it's gonna show that our money market is a negative number. Until it's, until he moves those bank recs.
Right. Big, big bills that we've been paying.
Yep. Last two weeks in delinquencies, we took in five thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. I can give that to you.
Okay.
In cash receipts, um, there was library donations, adopt an author. Copies at cost, dog licenses, which we're doing really good. Land records, recording, was a big one for nine forty-five. Land copies, thirteen, and zoning permits, one zoning permit. So, um, back, I couldn't even tell you, back maybe September, I went to a VLCT workshop at the Capitol Plaza. And Mike Gilbar, who is the chief financial officer at VLCT. Spoke, and so I sent him an email saying, can you come? Yes, but he needs to check with their attorney before he comes.
Okay.
Um, but he did agree to come and.
Sounds like he'll be the person to come, yeah.
Yeah, and get that finalized, so it's not. So hopefully I can get him to come in, even possibly it would be great if I could get him to come this Thursday.
Is it, or is it this week we have a?
Yeah, it's this Thursday, yeah.
It is this Thursday.
Okay.
I'm sneaks up on you.
And so the other thing I was, I sent it after last, like, we're meeting, um, finalizing the fuel contract. I sent an email to Gillespie's, but she hasn't bounced me back a contract, cause I wanted it signed by the board tonight. But, um, I haven't received anything from her. So other than that, me and Diana are working, we just finished the government budgeting portion.
Okay.
With our estimates.
I'm gonna try to get with Greg, Wednesday morning, we'll go over the highway budget.
Can you assemble that one too? The highway budget, okay.
We, we do it.
You can print it and then he goes over, okay.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go over and then, and then Greg and I'll go over and then we'll sit down and go over it to you. Um, I wanted to talk about the, um, the Buck Lake Cabot Road repair, cause I assume that you still haven't paid, um.
I have.
You have paid.
It's done.
I printed out Shauna's.
So you had your meeting with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I had, I had emailed Shauna and, um, she bounced me right back what she had sent to you.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, I printed it out, stuck in the thing and I sent the, the check right out.
Great, perfect, okay, good, thank you.
Made copies, it's in the binder, so when we do finalize, um, sit down with.
Yeah, I need to sit down now and put, put together.
And then we can get that grant cleared up also. So we have two grants, yeah.
Yeah, once I get this grant application done, which is pretty much.
I'm gonna send you a couple pictures, I have the pictures, you'll look for when you need them by.
Well, I'd like to, the deadline is Friday.
Okay, I'll get it done tomorrow, I meant to do it today, I got home too late.
Yeah, get those two reports done, so we can get some, some money.
Yep. Other than that, I have to do a transfer of money today.
So I'll be, um, I'll be putting out a warning for the, I'll call them special budget meetings.
Budget meetings, yeah.
Um, so we'll have twenty-four hour notice, so if you have a sense of whether the VLCT guy can come.
I'll give him a jingle tomorrow.
Uh, just let me know.
He's talking about HERF stuff.
Yeah, just trying to figure out how to deal with this reserve fund.
Whether I'm putting in, whether we put in the highway of capital reserve, uh, uh, item line and then transfer that.
Right, and so I just was gonna pass on that, I did call the lead and talk to somebody there and doing what you just suggested is legal to do. And then she sent me the statutes regarding, you know, I'll give them to you, cause I can just print them offline, but the, the use of unexpendited funds and then the, uh, highway funds, the special account, basically saying that what I said when you essentially this is when the town voted to set this fund, once you put the money in it, it's limited to only that use.
Yeah.
The other one was use of unexpendited balances, so if you were to have a carryover in the highway budget. So we're the danger of leaving money in there for a fund. Um, it says that anything, this is what I'm reading right from the statute, this is any fund, the funds raised from the town highway taxes shall not be used for any purpose other than that for which the tax was voted, subject to the provisions of this chapter, if in any year money so voted is not expended, it shall be applied to the same purpose the following year, so any carryovers, you have, if you have fifty thousand, you have to deduct it from, you know. So I think you knew that, but I just, cause I didn't talk to them.
With Mike is also to.
If you want these or care, you can print them offline.
The three percent carryover. But I think we're gonna have to establish in the highway capital reserve, so we estimate it and we budget, so it's not, we have like we've done in the past, the HERF ninety thousand, because the payments are coming out, there needs to be the Essex, the, the, the extra, for instance, ninety thousand.
Right.
And we only have two bills, two payments out of that, so hypothetically fifty thousand to carry over. So it'd be in that capital.
Right, so what, right.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I asked her about this, so what she said is, if you're making payments, or was it he actually, she was on a different issue. If you're making payments, you'd, you'd budget the payment money for the trucks.
And those are item lines.
Those have come right out of the highway budget.
But that extra money, it needs to still be in there.
Yep.
But it's in the capital, it's in a capital item line.
What this says is, it says that, um, and you know, special meeting.
You're still budgeting it and it's still a highway.
Right, so this place has a reserve fund, and it says the reserve fund shall be kept in a separate account and invested as other public funds and may be expended for such purposes for which the established, which established or when authorized by a majority voters to changes, so she's saying it would be a separate bank account.
Right, I get that part, but just to get it in the highway for estimating.
Yes.
It needs to have a line, a capital line.
Correct, and that's, we're in agreement, cause it would have its own.
We could budget for it.
It would say, what it would say, say it's fifty thousand, it would say fifty thousand for the HERF and then at some point you transfer the money into that.
At least that part is accountable for and then whatever.
Correct, so I think we're in agreement.
Yeah.
Then it can be.
And then we just gotta figure out.
That was an hour on the phone.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
How to account for the money that gets put into different, the different funds from Swenson. And maybe Mike could help us with that. Yeah. Just to have, you know, to have it be clear in the town report that we're getting this money from Swenson and it's going here.
The Excel spreadsheet in to, to show, um.
Sounds like we're getting, we're there, yeah.
Which funds it goes into.
That's why I'd pull these statutes, I could read them and say, it's pretty explicit which you can and can't do.
So making sure that I have the, the Swenson chart in there and then a do to, do from, so we see all the balances.
Yes, yeah.
At the end of.
You're doing a good job.
Great.
Other than that, um, it's kinda slow right now. We have lots of binding.
It's like number on fire reports, like a weekly. Sitting in an office is not my favorite thing to do.
Harry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Diana? I'll set for you.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah. I had an extra half a day last week and I started getting some of my recording caught up. You don't have to write that down.
You said it.
I got a little behind, but I, you know. Oh, and like I said, all I need is another week in December. So, between that and starting to get stuff together for the town report, coming right up. That's that, until we move on to the next project. It's happening.
It is, we were all over there watching.
Yeah, yeah, pretty fun. Uh, the bad news that came in on Friday was they found some additional asbestos.
Which I kinda guessed, cause I saw them putting a tarp over, like, oh, that can't be good.
Yeah, so you took off without even coming over.
Oh, I just looked over there, like, ooh.
Well, it was weird, I mean, I didn't go and look over because I didn't feel like climbing over there, but they found that, uh, the blueboard under the floor in the very back of the newer section had some vermiculite glued to it. I know.
Some of that's some old stuff that they found and used that.
And it's just weird though, but yeah, so I don't know if all the vermiculite was glued, if it was, it seems like that would be encapsulated and not triable, but, you know, whatever.
How do you glue, you'll make the right?
Yeah, isn't that weird? It's very strange, I only saw one piece of the guy brought over that was blueboard with a bunch of vermiculite glued onto it, not like an inch or anything.
Never heard of it.
So anyways, they, uh, the good news is, um, I wrote, sent that information to, uh, Lauren Oates and her boss Ben Rose, Lauren isn't working there anymore, but she's still helping because Ben, you know, her boss doesn't taking over in the meantime, I noticed that they're advertising for her job. But the state never hires somebody in a timely manner.
It takes forever.
Yeah, so that can get trained by the previous person, now that's not.
No, they'll be in three months after that person leaves.
So anyways, by Saturday I had a note from both of them that there is more money. So getting that over, and I just now got this estimate from the additional, ten thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars, so, yeah.
So it looks like the state might have funds to cover that.
Right, yeah, or the FEMA.
Or FEMA, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Surprise.
So that's good, I was worried that it would be a long time.
When are they coming back, do you know?
Wednesday, I believe, yeah, and I talked to Tim about, and well, Burke from Catamount Environmental wanted to contact information for Tim, so I got him that.
One thing I'm wondering is, um, should we be asking Blue Mountain Excavation for change orders for the five percent more that they wanted for having to wait and work in the winter and then?
Yeah, we probably should.
Yeah, it should.
They're not, they're not, you know, extremely, they're not like a law firm, you know, that's doing paperwork all the time.
Right, I know.
It's just simply write out an estimate and we agree to it, so that's why I gave you a form that you could use and that's it just basically gave it clear, so you know, nobody's, no surprises at the end.
Amendment, the first amendment to the contract was to, uh, when they decided to take away the stream restoration money, they had to give us money to, you know, to topsoil the site and put this, that, that, that along the stream and all that. That's been done, it, I mean, that's been signed by both parties and this is, uh.
Yeah, I think just dealing with FEMA would be good, it would be good to have.
And also she's, also Lauren sent me a form to send to them with the changes.
Right, I figured everybody else would have.
Yes, I mean, even just what they did, this is fine.
Yeah, that's, as long as you know what you got, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Are they gonna do some stream bank work this winter?
No, that's all, that was all the money that they took away.
Okay, yeah.
So we just have to hope that what's there.
They're gonna open it up, right?
It's gonna be the stream with whatever siding is in there now.
With the, with the stones.
Cause you can see from the stream right into the store, so.
But they'll peel, they're peeling the whole top off and opening it up.
Right.
And then they'll smooth all the site out and.
And if, and if there is stuff that looks like it's gonna fall in, you know, we have our ten yard.
We can take ten yards, so we could pay him while he's there to even do the lower part if we wanted to.
Right.
The lower part?
Well, we've got material a little crook on the other side that needs to come out.
From flooding this may.
We, we may wanna talk to him with his machine sitting there, if he's gotta clean that little bit, he can clean the next little bit.
You what do you mean, on the other side of Route fourteen?
Yeah.
You can't go in there, that's not.
Well, we can.
That's a state project, that's a state.
As long, well, as long as we don't take more than ten yards, we're, we're okay.
It's out of the state right away.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
From the washout, this.
Yeah, filled it up, it came out and then it was up gold.
Just hoping that, you know, I, I don't hold out much hope that the state will actually.
Nope.
Get right around to replacing those colors.
Let me share.
No, he does have something to share, yeah.
So I met with Shauna and Jaren Board, um, Friday to, to meet with Ron Rathburn. Shauna told me that V Trans has included, um, the culvert, changing the culvert, um, under Route fourteen with a FEMA grant that they're applying for.
Wow.
So she said, you know how long it takes FEMA to, but they are including it, they're including that work in, um. So when it'll happen, I'm not sure. We waited five years, so.
Yeah, so this sounds good, when they open that up, it's gonna solve ninety percent of the problem.
I think so, and then, uh, I mean, they could, they could clean that culvert out.
I, I think we talked about saying, clean that channel, clean the ends of the culvert.
Yeah, the metal culvert is half full of, maybe even more now.
Well, even if we need to pay a little extra to get it done, it's gonna have to be done this now or next summer, so. Cause I guarantee you under there's full of stuff.
I haven't crawled in there for hours.
One of us wants to go, one of us could talk to him on a separate contract.
Yeah, you might probably get under, get under there before it gets too cold. Oh, that's right, you'll be able, you won't have to get under it pretty soon.
No, and once he opens it, really, that makes a really simple deal, if he needs to just clean the bottom of that channel out, he's right there, sit on it. So one of us could talk to my hand who can.
So is this something that we should approve and sign tonight, or is it just?
It could, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's gonna happen.
It's got to happen, so I don't think we have any choice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all sitting there.
And this is for the asbestos removal.
That's for the additional.
Additional asbestos.
That they found on the.
So I would make a motion that we approve the, um, change order scope of work to remove the additional asbestos that was found last Friday to the price of ten thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
That's anticipated to be paid for by FEMA.
FEMA, yeah.
And we'll.
We'll pay it and get reworked.
We'll have twenty-five percent, will be ours.
Right.
Still should be good.
Call a favor?
Aye. This is one of those no choice deals.
I guess this is where we should sign, the town should sign?
It's the same name.
Yeah, you are authorized to do the, yeah, okay. Do you, I mean, you could sign it, I suppose.
No, you couldn't sign it on the stuff.
Okay. And could you let them know that we would like a, this, this same kind of document for the five percent increase that they wanted to get? That we're fine with giving them that, but we just need, you know, similar.
And I was gonna try to find that tire recycling guy who gets our tires of, um, green upstate, but we can't, we couldn't find it.
I can, well, council can get us.
Pauline Delvin.
Exactly, you can just come.
Cause they deal with them on green upstate.
Yeah, I, rather than putting it through the contractor.
Yeah, just so I think it's easier, just.
It still could be part of our FEMA expense.
Yeah. See today is twelve. So I'm just gonna write the town address for them, if I can remember it.
Field Box Ten.
Field Box Ten. Number six.
Very. Zero five six eight one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So you were gonna talk about that tram, Green Mountain Transit, would you?
Yeah.
You wanna petition that?
So, um, this is the, uh, notice that came, and this is for fiscal year, our next fiscal year twenty-one, um, where we would, um, and there is a, the town does have a policy of any new appropriation that would be warned in the town, um, meeting agenda that, um, that the entity petitions to get it, to get a five percent, I believe it is, of the town. To sign a petition in order for it to be on there and more.
Well, it sounds like that's, looks like that's what they expect, so.
Yeah.
So maybe Brian can take one of those.
Yeah, so five hundred dollars.
Did we get one last year?
Not from these people.
No, we, we.
These are new, this is the new.
When we first met with them, um, you know, that we, we talked about giving them appropriation for this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty.
Really?
But, and then we decided not to, we kinda wanted to wait and see.
Yeah, cause they did talk about petition back then, I don't remember.
Yeah, we talked about, yeah, in that conversation you talked about whether or not you were gonna require a petition.
Cause we can just put it on by statute if we choose to.
We could, but there is, there is a.
I know there's a town policy, but if it's not in accordance with statute, like, we could choose, we're not saying we should, we're saying we could.
But we, but, so, yeah, but the other one, the. What do they call it, Senator Ron Trin, well.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting, I just.
Wheel has to be treated like a nonprofit, so these people probably should be too.
Yeah, they are nonprofit.
Yeah, I mean, but yeah.
Yeah, we should, just to keep the auditors happy.
No, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, it's a whole thing on.
It's not one of those bills I wanna die on, I just was pointing out that if you read the statute, the statute says.
Well, that's good enough.
The statute says the board can do any of these if they want and if not.
Well, maybe if we don't get the number.
See what I'm saying, just so you're aware that it does say that, it's like, you could, you could, the petition part is so that it could be done if the board chooses not to do it. And then the voters put it on.
Remember what happened last year with the Senator Ron Economic Development Council, or some kind of a.
Yeah, cause someone could come in and we just agree and say, yeah, we'll put that on.
Especially since we don't have a place to put a petition anymore, except.
Right, that's why I just, that's, I've read that policy, I just don't like it, because it doesn't agree with statute.
And we do, we do have people in town using, using, taking advantage of this, so.
Really?
But the few people that use it, whether it's five or ten, hard enough to make it happen.
Right, and that's the issue, see, they can come in, if we all agree, the three of us or two out of the three, we can just put it on, if they, if they disagree, then they have the option of going and getting a petition, then we have to put it on.
Yeah, exactly.
By some policy, anyway, I'm not saying I have the hill here, I'll just bring it up.
I'm fine either way.
Could be an issue in the future.
Yeah, I would be amazed if we could get enough signatures.
Really?
Yeah, just because if, if you don't use them, you're not gonna care.
Well, one, one way of putting it out there is us, for us to gauge some interest, and we have.
Right.
A month about, when, when does the articles have to be in?
Get some people to pound the pavement and.
I'll take, I'll take it up there and see what I can get for numbers, but just in case we don't get them, we can just be ready to.
Why don't we make some copies, we could have it here at the town office.
To vote on.
Yeah.
The voters should get to weigh in on this myself.
Well, that way they can.
Calis Store would be a good place to put one as well, would that, would it matter if there was a calis?
No, as long as people know that it's only for Waverly voters.
Okay, so.
That would be the confusion.
Yeah.
Cause this is just one of those issues, I think it's a good issue that I think people would like to look at, it's just gonna be difficult for us to go get the signatures unless somebody wants to run around.
You can do it digitally, too.
No, how do you do that?
Can we do it on our website?
Yes.
But they can't sign on the website, can they?
Yeah, no.
Oh, they might, I don't know.
You can link it to a document.
Why don't we try it, that's what the website's for.
Yeah, you can put it on there, yeah, that would, that might get more people.
I don't know anything about it, you're outside of my box.
I was gonna say, that's how the railtors have you do all your paperwork now.
I signed my loan online, the federal IRS lets me sign my taxes.
So Laura, is that something?
You wanna investigate, if it's legal, it's legal, I, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, I know that our website gets so much traffic.
Well, you know, probably doesn't, but, but it's one, it's another avenue.
It's an option.
Yeah.
But we have a couple of more meetings we could make a decision to.
So you could just, you know, we can leave it up here.
There's twenty people over there.
No, is that something you can put on Front Porch Forum, saying we have this?
Yes, and I, I will do that, I will make, I will do a.
Cause that sorta helps us gauge the, the interest, but I'd hate to be, it didn't get on, and then, why do we get to vote on this, cause you guys didn't tell us, like, we tried.
Well, that, that's the thing, at town meeting, people don't do this much anymore, but they used to, these organizations would send somebody to answer questions.
Correct.
And then it kinda got to be pro forma and they didn't bother to do that anymore, but maybe these people will actually send someone, so they can tell people about the service, because people don't know about it. So I mean, they know from, uh, Green Center from, what's this, what are they called?
Green Mountain Transit?
RCT.
Yeah, R, no, this is RCT, I'm thinking about the one in Montpelier.
It used to be Wheels, I don't know if it still is or not.
GMTA. GMTA, yeah.
GMTA, okay, yeah, they do a lot of other services rather than just a bus route, you know, they take people to doctor's appointments and all that stuff.
That's Green Mountain Transit.
Yeah, and they get, uh, something less than, I mean, they ask for four hundred, some odd amount anyways.
Well, let's, maybe we could make a few plain copies and, I mean, I've, I've signed one and I'm going to kinda knock on doors in the village, so. Ellie was supposed to sign, I wish she hadn't.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not sure how many writers, I know Dan's girlfriend.
I think there's three or four.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, she's pretty happy with it.
Are we married?
Yeah, there's a woman who walks down Foster Hill, I'm, it's a couple mornings that I'm out shoveling snow, she's on her way down to get all the us.
Oh, really? Oh, interesting.
So we'll make a couple copies of these?
Yeah, I'll take one up with me.
Okay.
So there's, uh, another petition issue, um, I don't know when this happened, but a few years ago, we started putting the food shelves in a separate category than the other area organizations. If they wanna ask for a little more this year, do they have to get a petition, or can they just be?
If they're already on, they're already on.
They're already there, but the, the policy says that if you wanna ask for more, you have to do another petition. But we put them in a separate category because they are local service.
They're like us, they're a service organization.
They did get more one year right from town meeting, which they didn't even ask for.
I think we should just put it on, you know, my opinion, they're an entity that's been supported historically in the town.
Yeah, if they wanna stand up and ask for a little bit more to town meeting.
Yeah, they can, they can ask for it, we can put it in, without getting.
I think we can just put it in.
Yeah, all right.
Make the auditors mad, I'm not trying to do it.
No, it's not about that.
Not trying to do it, it's just, some of this stuff is difficult for these organizations to do this, and it's gonna make it really diff, I understand both sides of the argument, it's just.
Yeah, but sometimes it's too many classes.
Correct, that's the problem, and I, I have an issue when a policy violates statute.
Yeah.
It's like when we have rules at the state that violates a statute, it's like the statute always holds sway.
Right.
Cause if they took you to court, you're gonna lose, they're gonna say, well. You can say as a board, you're not doing it because your policy, that's okay, but that's just running people through a process, sometimes it's unnecessary. But just smile.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, um, I think we've pretty much, and the town highway report, we've pretty much done the Buck Lake Brook Catar.
So that's all set, Ron, they're, they, Ronnie got the voices, uh.
Yeah, Shauna Clifford and Jaren Board, um, met with Ron Rathburn on Friday morning, I was there too, it was a good meeting, um, you know, got, Ron got to share, um, his concerns. We walked up the brook on the right side of the.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, so, and I understand his concerns, basically, you know, what's been put down there, um, is adding more fodder to what's gonna come down with the.
Which we all may be digging it out in a few years.
And, you know, from hearing Ron talk, you know, there's, it seems like every time there's flooding, it's, there's always stuff coming down, it doesn't beyond what, you know, they've put down, so I can understand, and it seems like it's a yearly kind of management thing for him to just to try to detect the garage and his properties, so.
What about the trees and stuff like that, does he have any requests for us to go up and, you know, the road crew cleans and let stuff out?
I asked him about that, I said, did, you know, did the town in the past kinda clean out the trees, and he did remember that, you know, that the town would do that, I don't.
That's what he told me, he said the town used to clean those trees out.
Rip and Gary, God can't remember.
So I think, I think a couple things could alleviate some of his, his concerns, one is the trees doing that. The second is, in this spring, let's get those culvert bypasses put in in Jaren's driveway. Cause that needs to be done, and he's complained about that a couple of times, so, I think it's just something we need to do, and I think hire somebody to just get it done and be done. Cause it's not below the waterline, they're supposed to be put in above the water, just overflow.
Basically it'd catch a, you know, overflow or to help, to try to keep the water.
He's, he's mentioned that to me at least three times.
Yeah.
And again, the last time I looked there, the water was right up level with the road, and if you'd had overflow culverts, it would have alleviated a lot of it.
Yeah.
And it would stop that huge rush of water if that breaks. I don't think that would really.
Yeah, we plan for that. Yeah, so, so I think, you know, and again, um, you know, Jaren and Ron got to talk about the, the rock, apparently underneath the smaller rock, there are some pretty substantial. But, and Jaren and Board didn't, you know, mention it, yes, you know, with flooding, there are some of those smaller stones that are gonna.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Um, so Valley Lake Road, um, the grant is pretty much done.
Pictures you need for me.
Needs a, a few more pictures, I've been using some pictures from the Stormwater Master Plan, um, and I had a call into Alan May, just, I wanted to talk to him a little bit about that, cause I've been using some of that information, um, for the grant, um. I went to take some pictures on Sunday, and I thought, well, it's gonna melt here, you know, maybe if there's a little snow melting, it'll be a little more obvious, um, what's there, but there are some, actually, when they did that Stormwater Master Plan, there's some good photos, um, that I can use from that, um. So I just need to draw out a map, um, and, uh, and I'm gonna send it to Alan tomorrow. And hopefully he'll have some time to review it, and if there's anything that we can do to, um, to spruce it up a little bit, um. We'll resubmit it, so, we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Um, and what I, what I did, kinda, there was a question that kinda, working on that grant has kinda come into my head, um. You know, last, at our last meeting, we talked about, um, another, um, grant, writing a support, or signing a support letter, um, for, um, two of the designs that were part of the Stormwater Master Plan for the four sites in, in the village. Right at the moment, we have received a grant for two of the sites, the site, the school parking lot and the, um, for infiltration infiltration basin behind the annex, that would help, um, deal with the flow.
Keep the stuff out of the.
Out of the brook, yeah, um, and, um, when I, and then the other two are grants for a similar infiltration basin between the post office and the fire station, and then another infiltration basin, uh, from, that would catch water coming down from Church Street, and also water that comes down the lower part of the Catar, the paved part that goes into those storm drains and then runs into Kingsbury Grash. So those, those two, um, full design plans, the grant, um, that the Regional Planning Commission is wanting to submit, um, that, that, that letter of support was for, that. Those basically wouldn't cost the town anything but in kind, um, I would go to a few meetings, um, the road crew might dig a couple test pits, but that wouldn't cost the town anything, the other that we've already been received, um, would cost the town about two thousand dollars cash, and then another roughly two thousand dollars, again, in kind, so a meeting with the designer. And I know, um, like last meeting, we decided to just kind of let it go, not do those things, um. It would be of benefit to us with this grant that we're working on for better roads, to have those kinds of things, sort of in the future planning, you know, as future planning, um. Alan, Pam DeAndrea, who's been working on these grants, um, talked to Alan May, um, you know, he told us that the catch basins would be fine, and, and, um, he's right in the fact that they would catch the actual road erosion, the gravel, um, but the phosphorus, et cetera, in the water would go right into the Kingsbury branch, um, and a big part of all this stormwater stuff is trying to cut down on the phosphorus in the water, not that our, you know, that beautiful wetland we have pretty much takes care of.
Takes care of the whole problem.
But they don't seem to.
Yeah, they don't see it that way.
They don't see it that way. So, um, I've been kind of rethinking and sort of wishing, maybe, you know, it won't cost the town a lot of money, maybe we should go ahead with these full designs. There's the designs, there's no commitment for the implementation, um, you know, and the implementation, from my point of view, would only happen if there was grant money to pay for those two.
Available to do it.
The town does not have the money to pay for, pay for these things, um.
So we're just talking about a design right now?
We're talking about.
So my only concern is as long as it's not gonna hold up our improvement on that road.
It's not gonna hold it up, no.
In fact, it may. I don't have an issue with.
Being able to say on the grant that, you know, that we have, you know, we're in the process of getting the full designs and there's a future plan for implementation, would actually be a feather in our cap.
Sure.
For the, and this work is preliminary.
The decision to actually put them in would be later.
Would be later.
When money, cause, yeah, I have other concerns that we'd wanna talk.
So we could still do in front of the fire department now, this year?
We would do, everything, everything that we talked about doing, we would do, and we would put in the catch basins.
Right, we put in.
They would be temporary until these infiltration basins would, would be put in place, um.
That would solve the problem temporarily.
Yes, it would be an interim thing, cause.
Well, it solves our problem, it doesn't solve their phosphorus problem.
No, it doesn't, and it would, it's gonna be.
But it's their problem.
Just knowing how these grants and how, you know, time.
Yeah, I know.
It'll be four or five years probably before, um, so we would have this in place to, as a kind of a.
Yeah.
A Band-Aid of sorts, um, it would solve the erosion problem, um, hopefully.
Yeah, that'd be including the paving up into the school parking lot, in front of the annex building.
Yeah, that paving would be a separate project, but we would dig that road up and, well, it could be, if, again, if something Pike wants to look at, but, you know.
Should we go lower that road more this year?
That's part of this grant, yeah.
Cause what I'm gonna do is get, I'm just gonna wait till after Christmas, when I'll get an engineer or somebody from somewhere to draw up what we're gonna do profile wise, if we're gonna rearrange the end of the driveway or whatever we're gonna do, and then And then that way, the property owners can all weigh in on it. And then we'll, you know, we'll have to let that out as a contract of some kind. If there's no grant money available, I don't believe to do that work.
To do that design work before the paving, not that I'm aware of.
Or the actual digging and recreating of that road.
Well, that's actually, that would be part of this grant.
Oh, if we got it.
If we got it.
Yeah.
If we got it.
If not, we have to pay for it ourselves.
So, yep. Yeah, the, doing the budget kind of factored in high on it, just figuring, you know, if it does take more time than than the road crew is thinking, you know, and it's, and, you know, I used Greg, gave me the ballpark figures. And, you know, we can still put it out to bid, and if somebody can do it for the same amount as what the road crew.
Yeah, it just frees up, and I actually did talk to Greg about this, he would prefer not to do it.
Okay, yeah.
If I understood him correctly.
Yeah, so we were getting them out, and we would estimate, you know, and then put out a bid, and then see if the bid would come close to what we estimate that we have.
That's good, there's plenty of contractors around.
And then Will does admit it, all the gravel material will recover and we'll need a place to store it.
Yep. And this is for fiscal year 21, so, you know, we won't really hear whether we receive the grant until like March.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So, you know, but then we still have time to put it out to bid.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's gonna go in, it's pretty much ready to go. This is kind of my weekend work.
What a great weekend.
Yeah, and that nice sunny weather.
I blew insulation in my attic, yeah, probably had about equal amount of fun.
So with that said, we're good, you know, we've got, we've received the grant for the two. But would we be willing to sign this letter of support for the other two full design grants? Kind of changing our mind from what.
Yeah, for design, I don't have an issue with.
Okay, so we'll all sign my, I guess.
I have a birthday on it too. I've been burned by that one before.
All right, so on to the Old Quarry Road. So I will scan this and send it to them. So we met this past Saturday, a special select board meeting to discuss whether or not to, well, basically, first to discuss the fact that the survey that we had done for the spur at the top of the Old Quarry Road has revealed to us that part of that spur and the town right of way, the three rod right of way, is actually on somebody else's property also. So by Roy Eastman and Linda Sheehy. So we had, the lawyer, our town lawyer, basically gave us three options to consider for how to proceed with this new information, new evidence from the survey. The first option was that we reopen the hearing that we had on October 9th. Reopen or consider it a continuation of the hearing. Properly warned to consider and take in the new evidence from the survey and to lay out the piece of property that the spur is on, the Eastman-Shehy property. So that was option number one. The second option was to start from the beginning, just rolling over again. And then the third option was to move the bit of spur, the road, a little bit more over onto, so that it would be totally on to Coleman Parker's property. And when we met on Saturday, I think we pretty much agreed that the first option was the one that we wanted to proceed. So I've written up a new warning, basically just kind of modifying the old warning, that we need to approve tonight, and we'll need our town clerk to be attest to it. And then we can send the warning out for, we have to warn it for a month. So the date that we're warning for the new reopening of the hearing will be January 10th. So we'll put the warning out tomorrow, December 10th. It'll be good for 30 days, and we'll go from there, we'll see, see what happens. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the warning for the January 10th continuation, reopening of the hearing for the spur connecting the Old Quarry Road with the Catarole.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll sign, and then we'll ask Diana to come and sign it. Where's the other part of that? Here we go with the paper.
How many people will show for this one?
We're gonna schedule it here, so I'm assuming, assuming not quite so many. Where is the second page?
Just add that new person in so they have a chance to speak if they wish to.
And I am, I am in communication with them, and I'm gonna let them know, obviously, they'll be getting this warning again. But I'm hoping, oh, we'll see, I mean, I'll be kind of, I have a feeling that they probably are not gonna wanna come up to Woodbury from where they live in Rahway, New Jersey, to do this. I'm hoping that we'll have some type of written statement, or maybe we could do a phone thing or something. So Diana, we need your signature on this warning.
Do you need a notary or just a?
Says attached to true record, so, and then it has town clerk, so I don't know whether it's to be notarized. But then, of course, you also have to do your warning thing that we did before. So basically, we've kind of gotta go through the whole process over again. Yeah, I know.
Wonderful.
I'm sorry. It's nothing to do with me. Okay. Oh, God. The whole certified meal thing again, oh, God.
Oh, yes.
And I had the list from before, I brought the folder down.
Oh, good, I have a bunch of them that were returned that I never got back to you.
I've got some other things in here, but I'm, I should probably hang on to the phone numbers for Roy Eastman.
I can't do this.
Just hang on to what I should do. I think I'm good, I got this phone number. That's the other piece of all that. Okay.
So you're gonna see if he can give you that piece of line under here, then?
I'm gonna see, yeah, he sounded sort of, I mean, he didn't sound like.
Well, you already approached it.
I, I do not in detail, but I did, he's, my feeling is that he may just donate it to us, or I don't think.
We'll have to decide compensation after the next hearing, if he wants to.
Just give him a, do a quick claim deed that he can.
Well, yeah, I'll see, I gotta try to figure out what options I should talk to him about from the lawyer.
What is this, is this just a?
It's probably extra papers that's in there, I've been just putting things in there also. This is the old, this is a copy of the old for that October 9th hearing, and that's probably the same, it's the other part. Yeah, there's probably extra stuff in there.
Just puts it all in there and gets it together.
Yeah, I was trying to keep it all together, the surveys in there too, I have that digitally, so.
So this doesn't affect Coleman's portion of that?
It doesn't, and you know, if that, for this, the continuation of the hearing, because we'll basically just be addressing the property, the new property. So we don't have to go, you know, back over any of this stuff that we all, from the old hearing. So it should be short and sweet. And, you know, Coleman is certainly gonna receive notice of it, it's a public meeting, he's welcome to be here, but it won't really concern his property at all. And then I suspect from this hearing then, our town lawyer will put together the final, the final part. Okay, now I gotta find the agenda. I think we're pretty much.
I got it.
Okay.
We're at road crew work report.
I really don't have much to report, other than, you know, that you guys did, you and Lynn did meet with the road crew. And I think we're, hopefully, we're on a positive track.
Yeah, so we need to go over this list really quick.
Yep, here's my. Yeah.
I guess the two biggest ones, we probably gotta, well, I think we have to take a serious look at the dump truck issue, but I think that's for us to talk about in budget time.
Right.
Think about it. This idea of appointing, I guess you're holding the title of road commissioner right now?
I'm not the road commissioner, I refuse to have that title. I am the town highway administrative assistant.
Got it, and that's what, so one of the things that Lynn had brought up, we kind of banged around with it, is the appointment of a road commissioner, whether it's Lynn, whether it's someone else, that we all, I think, pretty well understood that we're not in a position to do that job. So that's something I think we need to think about, we need to look at.
Yep, I agree.
You continue to do what you're doing, and we'll figure out whether, if, I think we may look at it two ways. Don't look at it if it's Lynn, and people have trouble with Lynn, that we shouldn't do it. But is this a valid thing, and I think it is.
I think it's.
Whatever, wherever we do it, because I don't think any of us wanna be in the position, and again, having talked with Greg, both Greg's, like, they both want to do a good job.
They do, they wanna.
We may have disagreements on what that is, and some of these things may be controversial. And that's what, you know, we may have to say, this is how it's gonna be, and that's the way it is. Which not everyone will be happy, and that's, again, the position we're in, when you have employer-employee relations. Sometimes it gets down to, we get to try and say, and that's the way it is. But I do think it's valuable, before we would take some of these actions, and we sit down with each of them individually with the board, or give them that opportunity as we would want to be as an employee, and say, this is what we're considering, I'd like to hear your concerns. We may not agree with you, we may not change what we're gonna do, but, because that's what I would want done.
Yep.
So that would be my suggestion, in that particular gap. But I think it's something we need to take a serious look at doing, whether we compensate this person, which, again, we have an offer from someone to do it with no compensation, but realistically, in the moving forward, there may be a day when there needs to be some compensation for that. So that's to be discussed. And the other big one would be shifting the focus of the road crew from reconstruction projects to general maintenance. So that's, I think, we need, two things we gotta take a serious look at. So doing one fixes a lot of those other little things that we talked about, and I just made a quick list. Some of the things that I picked up on is that we do have an electronic log system. We may wanna say this has to be done by the folks over there, however we do that. And I also, there may be an opportunity to use an electronic timekeeping system, where you can weigh in, whoever knows with this about.
I don't, yeah, I don't know what that's.
Logging hours electronically, some way, right there.
Truck equipment hours?
Well, even, they're work hours, truck hours and work hours. There we go.
Oh, I saw. I saw that, and I looked at it this week, and I couldn't, what the heck is this?
So Skip Lindsey had created this, it's very small.
I have glasses on.
I have glasses on too.
But it's.
This would be for employee hours, right?
Yeah, for the highway.
So they would fill it in?
Right, so, again, the idea is we'd have one electronic log, which you're working on now, right? You've been entering stuff in it?
For the equipment.
For the equipment.
Just for the maintenance and.
Right, so this is something that, so there's, I know that, like, Greg may not wanna do it, but like, I know Tim, for the fire, is very electronic savvy. So you might get one of the other employees to do it, but I think it's something we may wanna just say, you need to do this. Log eight hours, log what you're doing it. And then this type of system where we're getting, not just, I worked eight hours today, but what did we work on? That's what this is kind of saying.
It states.
So that's, that's all kind of fits in with that management, is that kind of makes our life easier?
I think we try and enlarge that.
I know Greg Parkers keeps a journal of.
He does, yeah, he showed me the book, right, so, and again, nothing against Greg, and I don't even care, he may not be wanting to. But we can still say this needs to be done.
Right.
And you need, this is one of those things, it's just you all.
Because we don't see the book.
Right, y'all figure out.
It's not only that, but if we're working on a grant, and they put in the hours, how many grant on that road.
It'd be so much easier.
It'd be so much easier.
Pull up the iPad, you pull up the history, and boom, we're done, we don't have to pull up research on timesheets.
See, what I have to do is Greg has it in his journal, I write down the dates.
That needs to stop, that needs to stop.
Get the files.
So whether Greg wants to do it, or if, I know Tim does a lot of our electronic stuff, he's good at that. Give him a couple hours a week to do all that logging, but they're each gonna probably have to do their time records. If there's a system to do it on, they'll have to do it on, we've got the iPad over there.
What if they, what if they did the time system for each person on paper, and then Tim entered it?
Any way they wanna do it, but it's, so it's electronic, and that way, you have, we all have it. But that's one of the things I think we should need implement somehow.
Okay, okay.
Well, I don't need to make that decision tonight, but we have a couple meetings coming, we need to, some of this stuff, we need just, they're very little things. That's a big one.
Plus accountability, you know.
Well, plus.
We have the paper trail accountability, but this is.
It's there, but it's very difficult to do things on paper. We've morphing everything of the firehouse on the electronic records.
This would be much easier for.
I've gotta produce reports for every individual, what they did for training, for their medical, for their fire. And sitting there going through papers every January wasn't fun. Now I can go, she had 50 hours, or whatever it is, and that person went on this many runs, and I can document it very quickly.
Yeah, that would make my grant report.
Right, so we gotta cogitate on that, that's just something we need to do. The other thing that I don't need to get into much, because I think if you did one, item one, the other items besides the, we have to decide one and two, and probably the electronic time and record keeping system, I think was kind of our deal. But then the rest of it, your road commissioner manages. Because again, it's really, it's difficult for us to propose what the road crew needs, right? Because Greg's doing it, and, you know, that would give us another person in there that's kind of, that's their job, is not necessarily having to go out and work. But they're gonna come in and say, well, this week, it's gonna rain, you're gonna cut rush, or this week, you know, you fill in the blanks.
So the codes he came up with are, whether they're doing training, whether they're doing grading.
See, this is great for when you're doing grants, or when we're looking at where the time is going. Because again, this, and it depends on the road crew too, because if somebody says, well, they're not out grading, well, we can run a report really quickly, yes, they are, they are out grading.
They have a system that does a lot of that.
Right, and we are, right.
On his computer in the office.
Correct, and that's what we want, I think we need to just say, you gotta use this. Now, whether each, it's better if each employee does their own, but we could have it with, one, if they're uncomfortable with electronic stuff.
I could always input that too, my slideboard hour.
I'm trying to just not have so many people involved in just timekeeping, you know what I mean? Because I know for me at work, it's my job to record all my time on the computer, and I just, I didn't get a choice, I just do it. So anyway, so I guess, I think, I think we need to take action on a couple of these, I only have to make it tonight. But then we create something, and then we say, moving forward, this is what it's kind of gonna look like.
Yep.
Following the one principle that don't change too much at once, because if you do too much, you'll get nothing done. So I'm thinking, pick a couple of these, and then let the others kind of work themselves out for a while.
Do we might, wanna try to meet with the different road crew employees before town meeting, or?
I think we should, I think in the next couple of months, we should take, particularly if we're gonna do one, item one. And say, this is what we're thinking about, I wanna hear your concerns.
Yep, meet with them all.
We may not agree with you, you may not like what we do, but this may be what happens. Because I think we're all kind of in agreement, but I don't want it to feel forced down your throat, because nobody hates anything more than to get told that you didn't get any input, just understanding your input might not change.
I think what Lynn can offer is a nice set of eyes from somebody who's done the work, and he can come to us and say, you know what, over on the county road, there's a short section that really needs some attention. Maybe they haven't seen it, maybe they haven't thought about it, you don't know, but.
And if we end up going with his offer, we need buy-in from those folks to do it. And if not, it could be someone else, and maybe Lynn's still willing to work with that other person to train them. If the personalities are gonna be challenging.
Right, that'll be the, that'll be.
Right, so there's an opportunity, I think, if it's a different person, but you, that person.
Lynn has proven that he can be.
He was polite over there at the garage, everything was very polite.
I think if those guys will give him a chance, he could really make a difference for us.
And then the expectation with that foreman would be, they'd be coming to the Sleitman's meetings on Monday, so we can talk through them, and then.
Foreman or the commissioner?
The commissioner, sorry, the commissioner, then Greg doesn't have to come, the commissioner would be, would be in charge of, you know, Greg's still foreman, he's gonna manage the, what, you're gonna get told, this is what you need to do this week.
Yep, and he's.
And go do it, you manage the people, and that's where that limits what the commissioner has to do.
The commissioner has more oversight than we do, obviously.
Right, we're the ultimate stop, but, you know, we're not knowledgeable about, I'm not, I mean, I could become knowledgeable, but I'm gonna have to go spend time over there.
Yeah, it does add, it adds some accountability, you know, that we.
You know, and it's possible in the future, you could have a road commissioner who's also the road foreman and working on the vehicles over there, that could be. Because we don't have that right now, and with the bodies and personalities we have now, this may be what we need to do. It may very well, the next person goes in there, they may be perfectly qualified to do the job of both, but they, you know, you lay right up the expectation that you're gonna come to the Sleitman's meetings on every other Monday, and we expect you to manage all these things. And when there's a problem, we're gonna be bringing you in on the table as to why it's not done. It's not the crew's fault, it's your fault, it's the commissioner.
Yeah, the road commissioner will get all the.
You get all the. So the dynamic changes, they get the phone calls. But that's what I'm saying, you may, it may be unrealistic to say there's absolutely no company, maybe similar to what they're doing with you, a certain amount of hours.
Seems like there should be.
To me, to say that you're not gonna compliment someone is just, it's unreasonable and unrealistic. It's just, that's the way, some will disagree with me, but that's okay, you take the job then.
Yeah, that sounds.
So anyway, that's it, what we got so far, Laura, I think it's moving forward okay.
Yeah, good.
Okay, so I assume the town hall is all?
All done, Diana's seen it. Robin hadn't seen it yet, but it's all done, all those shingles were hauled out of there this week, Brady did the final payment.
Excellent.
So. I have an issue.
Oh, uh-oh.
Have you noticed the, I don't know, I, I call it a black max flash, it's probably not, that's what it's called, on the outside of the building where you have the main, where the two roof, where the roof comes together to the main.
The flashing.
Right, that flashing there, I thought that was gonna be one long solid piece across there. It's got, I don't know, three, four different seams through there, is that gonna be a potential for more?
Do you know how much you overlap those? Can you ask him? Okay, we'll find out, because if it's overlapped a couple of feet, it should be okay.
Should be okay, yeah.
If it's just a little bit, I hope, I think he knew what he, yeah, yeah. We'll look into it, if you can find out how much you overlapped it, we'll answer that if I can.
That's my issue, I mean, because we just had this work done, so it doesn't.
You don't want to have.
If it's overlapping enough, we should be okay, we'll find that out.
Yeah, check in with.
Because I know mine's got, I've got a 40-foot deck and that's multiple pieces of flashing, and I just overlapped it by a foot and a half or something. No water gets through there. And we'll find out.
Okay.
So at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session citing 1 VSA Section 313A, 1 Part B, Labor Relation Agreements with Employees.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.